I said we go for the morning early.
Yeah, I was going. Excuse me.
Oh.
Fifteen hundred.
My mom's come home. It's thirty thousand. It's thirty five thousand and then one hundred.
The amount is fifty. It's the right one.
Okay.
See, it's thirty thousand.
Do you have proclamation?
I'll have this time. I don't want to tell them that either.
Chair will call the May fourth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting in the City Council to order. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Colgenzy.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman Decenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, our quorum is present.
Thank you. I'd like to start the meeting on somber notes and a reminder to everybody, especially those that tune into the world news with the coronavirus, as people have watched the country of India, they've, you know, it's reached a new catastrophic level. And a lot of times you look at it and we're almost numb or immune to the situation unless it hits home. And so I'd just like to remind individuals of our Indian population that we have here in a number of ways. But for me personally, Pranima Brahma, my administrative assistant, her family's been impacted. She was supposed to go to India and visit her mother. Hadn't seen her since pre-pandemic and, you know, a week before she was to go, sadly, her mother had passed away. So I would like to take a moment of silence, not only for her, but for, you know, the people of India and every, you know, that's suffered under the pandemic. And we all should realize that it's, it's changing every day. And people ask me about the masks, how much longer we'll wear them. And it's not about when we stop wearing the masks, it's how do we eradicate the COVID virus? And, you know, and back in the early nineteenth century, nobody heard about the flu until the Spanish flu came, and it's still with us today in a different realm. The COVID virus is going to be similar. So even though hopefully we come out of this sooner rather than later with regards to mask wearing, we will have to stay reengaged with social distancing, move in that direction, especially in this upcoming winter months, because I would think that it's going to resurrect again with regards to, just like the flu does on, you know, that annual basis tragically. So if we would take a moment of silence for that and encourage everybody to get their vaccination, I'd appreciate it. And her mother's name was Anjun Dos. So we, our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family, Pranima Brahma. At this time, you know, on a rebounding note, we do have a proclamation to recognize Springfield Convention Visitors Bureau and all our hospitality industry with regards to National Travel and Tourism Week. I'm not sure if Director Dolls Hill here, Amy Beadle, will do a presentation down here And Director Doll and his staff as well as others have really been working diligently, trying to get us to rebound as best as possible and get conventions and tourism. But for us locally, it's all about supporting one another. And we'd ask that people in Springfield and the surrounding communities, you know, reengage what we have here right at home and support our downtown businesses, our historic sites, and moving in that direction. But it reads, whereas Springfield, Illinois is not only the place where Abraham, President Abraham Lincoln lived, but is home to more Lincoln historical sites than any other city in the world. And whereas our capital city, travel and tourism equates to more than thirty-five-hundred local jobs, generating nine point five million dollars in local taxes and contributes one hundred and ten million dollars in payroll. And whereas 2020 was an unprecedented time due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and one of the industry's hardest hit was tourism and hospitality. From sites and group tours to hotel stays and conferences, everything fell silent. And whereas we look to 2021 as a time of renewed hope and energy, knowing we will soon be able to reconnect with loved ones near and afar with the help from our travel and tourism partners. And whereas travel is important to the economic growth of our city, we thank our business community for their strong partnership and support, the volunteers at the various sites and attractions, and those who take time to help at the various special events, and to the residents of our community who are the city's ambassadors and carry our positive message about Springfield. And whereas we also appreciate the efforts of the City of Springfield's Convention Visitors Bureau team led by Scott Doll, who worked diligently to increase Springfield's footprint as a leisure destination and are determined to make our city home to numerous conferences and conventions. And whereas this year's theme for National Travel and Tourism Week is the power of travel, we are grateful to the hospitality and tourism industry that is working hard to bring back our vibrant community, helping restore our economy, rebuilding our workforce, creating new memories for individuals and families, all by reconnecting America. Now therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, Illinois, on behalf of our residents and City Council here, I proclaim, May second through the eighth, two thousand and twenty-one shall be Springfield Travel and Tourism Week, and the City of Springfield in honor of National Travel and Tourism Week. We all call upon our residents that when it's time to gather with family and friends, plan to reunite in Springfield. Thank you very much for the great work you do, Scott.
On behalf of the Visit Springfield team, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being a staunch supporter of tourism. Thank you, City Council, for having our backs as well. It's an unusual, I think, proclamation, you know, given the fact that we're a city agency and, you know, and this is what we do. But it's been an unusual year as well. And I, on behalf of our staff, we just want to thank you. And also recognize our tourism partners as well, our hundreds of tourism partners, our sites, our attractions, our hotels, our restaurants, that have really had to stick it out this year and really have done the best job that they can. And I'll tell you, I said it before, we've got the best team in the country. This team worked with our meeting planners throughout the year, and industry experts say that, you know, the rebound may happen in 2024. Springfield's rebound will happen in 2022 and beyond. And that's because of the work that our team did and certainly the work along with our partners as well. So on behalf of everyone at Visit Springfield, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
Move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this City Council meeting.
Move.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
Move. Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open? Do you need to do a roll call?
I should be ready.
Vote, yep, voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Agenda number two thousand and twenty dash four six four and two thousand and twenty dash five three eight remain tabled during committee. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one four seven, an ordinance amending chapter ninety, section ninety point two four of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to liquor licenses. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one four seven on final passage. Alderman Redpath.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw this ordinance.
Good move to withdraw the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty, an ordinance annexing certain described real property located at Westwood Lane and North Lake Road. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
It did need a special meeting.
I agree. In this case, it's just the annexation. There's not an annexation agreement. So I did check that. I think you'd asked that question in committee, so we're fine as we are.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
And the ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-three, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Douglas L. Sutton for the purchase of real estate located at eleven thirty-two North Tenth Street in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in closing costs and the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars and for a total amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-three on final passage.
So move. Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
I believe we have a, is this a amendment to that, to correct the dollar amounts?
If you would like, yes, that would be fine. We did circulate a corrected copy. So if you would like to make a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to amend, amend this with the corrected dollar amounts.
Second.
Good movement, second, to accept with the amended dollar amounts. And that's what I just read, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think the new corrected dollar amounts is thirty thousand dollars in closing costs, amount of five hundred dollars for a total not to exceed thirty-five thousand. That's what it says on the.
Yeah, the corrected one is.
Attached.
Yep. The corrected amount is one thousand five hundred dollars. So you're correct, Alderman Red.
I'm sorry, we, we had listed just the agenda item, but the attached correction is attached to this.
Okay, I was just reading the summary.
And I apologize if that was confusing.
Okay, I was just reading the summary. I would.
But you're correct, it listed it, and the summary is thirty thousand five hundred dollars and then thirty-five thousand. So the corrected amount again is thirty thousand dollars in closing costs and the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars and not to exceed thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Those would be the amended amounts.
Yes.
Any other discussion? With, on the amendments.
Voting the amendment first by voice?
Yep. Voice vote on the amendments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Motion on the ordinance as amended.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion on that? All in favor of that, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes as amended, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-four, an ordinance authorizing preliminary relocation expenses for the relocation of personal property located on parcels SR zero two, zero one two six, KH four LLC, and SR zero one two nine, Family Video Movie Club, Inc., in an amount not to exceed six hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars relating to the Springfield Rel Improvement Project, Usable Segment Three for the Office of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-four on final passage.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMiniman.
Alderwoman Decenzo and I would like to hold this for two weeks. We've got some issues with Family Video. We'd like to discuss with Family Video regarding their location on MacArthur Boulevard. And we've consulted with Alderman Gregory, and he's okay with a two-week hold.
I'm okay with it. Alderman Proctor also shares some of that too, so I just want to make sure it's okay with him.
So the motion would be to.
Hold for two weeks.
Postpone until the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good movement, second, to postpone for two weeks till next City Council meeting. And second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-eight, an ordinance authorizing a budgetary transfer to reconcile, reconcile, sorry, end of the year budget levels with fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one expenses prior to year-end close for the Department of Public Works. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-eight on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. And the ordinance passes.
I'm good.
Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-nine, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Springfield Fire Department to cover costs in excess budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one sixty-nine on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one seventy, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of four hundred and eighty-three dollars, I'm sorry, four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the Office of Budget Management to cover health insurance costs in excess budget for fiscal year twenty-one. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one seventy on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Been moved, and is there a second?
Second.
Been moved, and second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one seventy-five, an ordinance approving the appointment of Mark Winkler to the Springfield Economic Development Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one seventy-five on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The appointment passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is two thousand and twenty-one dash one seventy-six, an ordinance for the appointment of Erica T. Austin to the Mid-Illinois Medical District Commission. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one seventy-six on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Appointment passes, ten voting yes, none voting no. I didn't know if either one, Mark Winkler or Erica Austin are here, either one of them? Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules and place on first reading agenda number two thousand and twenty-one dash one ninety-four, an ordinance approving a variance pursuant to chapter fifty-two point twelve A of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended to chapter fifty-two point twelve E regarding the responsibility for the costs associated with water main extension of service and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of, in the amount of four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a water main extension project to proposed properties located at seventy-two hundred and seventy-three hundred Woodland Trail Drive for the Office of Public Utilities.
So move.
Second.
Good movement, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business coming before the council?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I just wanted, wanted to comment real quick on the, the ordinance that, that we had that were to cap gaming. And I had a nice conversation with, with Mr. Zirkle and with, one of the reasons why we pulled this was it's, it, the complexity to do, do what we wanted to do is just, it's, it's crazy. And I think for Mr. Zirkle, he was happy that we did it because it was going to take a lot of research. You know, it, there's just, there were some rumors on, on social media that it had to do with special interests and stuff. It had nothing to do with special interest. And the people that put it out there, shame to themselves for, for saying that. And, you know, this is about, some of the problems that we ran into is if a business moved, which we've had businesses that have moved across the street and they have to get a new liquor license, they would lose their gaming license. And we don't want to see that happen. Some of the other issues, just off the top of my head, is it was also going to affect any, any bars that are closed right now, that are starting to become dilapidated. You were not going to be able to, people, it just wouldn't do the people, it couldn't make the money work to, to open up some of these places. And there's a lot of other legal issues, you know, with, you know, with moving from a corporation or, you know, LLC to corporation and things like that. I, I don't, that's kind of way beyond me. But, you know, I think that, you know, we, we would like to figure out a way to do this, but I just, at this time, and, and after talking to Mr. Zirkle, who was very helpful, we, you know, we just felt like it's, it's better to just let it go and maybe come back with some stronger requirements such as we, we limit, limit it to bars and restaurants and no more, you know, of the odd, of the odd businesses that we've had that requested it. And that's probably what you'll see us come back with, so that we, we, we don't harm the people that already have it. And that was a big concern. The people that have it, if they sold their, their business, they, we, we weren't sure if the license would be able to transfer. So we, we wanted to make sure that that was, that was, you know, all that was taken care of, just too complex. But the idea that anyone that would think that we did this because of any type of special interest, it was one hundred percent wrong and, and, you know, shame on the people out on Facebook that, that said that, so.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I didn't plan on talking about the gaming issue, but since you brought it up, Alderman, on a related matter, you know, I, I appreciate the staff providing us the information that showed who was audited in two thousand and nineteen. I believe there were eleven businesses randomly selected, and we were, the staff indicated that there were no violations, that everything was fine with those eleven businesses that were established. I appreciate that information being shared. You know, Corporation Counsel, I would like to sit down with you though, because I even had some confusion with, and I think there's confusion out there, with what, what a truck stop is and what a, I'll call it a super truck stop. That may not be the statutory term, but there's different variations. I'm getting questions from businesses that already have licenses about other businesses that are operating in the community, who they don't think should, they, you know, they make, may or may not follow under the guidelines of this definition of truck stop. So if we can continue that dialogue, and I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I was going to say, just, just to follow up on what Alderman Hanauer said, it is complicated for a couple of different reasons. When a company sells its business, if they, if the other company, which is pretty typical, is buying assets, but creating a new company, you know, new, a new business, then that would trigger the new license, which would then include the prohibition. And that's the complexity of trying to draw that line, but doing it in a way that it doesn't literally take away value of an existing business. Because if they can't sell their business like their stock, then they wouldn't be entitled to a transfer, but only a new license, which would then trigger the prohibition. So that's what you get into, and I'm, I'd be happy to try to work with you some more on how to maybe make a clearer picture on how to handle that. But yes, we had several discussions about it, and I just want to confirm that. It's, there's some complexity there.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two quick thing, well, not on this topic. Is it okay to move on?
Any discussion left on the video game?
Okay. Just really quick, two things. If there's an update on my ordinance request regarding compensating your car for fly dumping?
We're, yes, we are working on that.
Okay.
Yes.
Think we have that ready for filing next week?
Yes, we'll have to set and go through that because the part of the, not to get too deep in the weeds here, but the issues about when you can, under what circumstances you can actually take the car and whether or not a, that type of violation qualifies. But I would like to set with you, and I know we were going to do that last week, and we got kind of sidetracked. So maybe between now and the next meeting, if you had time, we can kind of go through the options.
Okay, I appreciate that.
No problem.
And then secondly, I think we were going to get an update today about the two projects downtown, Booth Ferguson and then the Public Market. Because a friend of ours was by the Ferguson Booth building today and starting to deteriorate a little bit. So I'd appreciate an update from the developer about the funding status, so we can see if the things are moving along or not.
Yep. On Booth Ferguson, they said they would provide a written report at the next City Council meeting. With regards to Public Market, I haven't heard on that one. Have you, Corporation Counsel?
No, I have not.
So we'll have to follow up on that.
All right, well, I'd advise you to, please reach out to the developer, Ferguson Booth, and see if they can't add some integrity to the windows, because they're starting to blast out.
Okay.
Yes, got it.
And then if Corporation Counsel could explain the process with the reconsideration veto?
Oh, the, yeah, just briefly, Council Coordinator Griffin and I were actually going over this earlier, and the, our practice has been that where there has been a, an ordinance passed that has then been returned for reconsideration or veto, typically we've done that. The last one, and we actually had to look it up, Council Coordinator looked it up, and so did I, was, there's only been one other. And what ended up happening when it was filed, which we consider it filed today, then it would be addressed at the next council meeting. And I believe that's the way we've done it the last time, although there's only been one other. And then when, you may recall, when the prior council came into office, there was a veto that was done by Mayor Houston, like the very last day, that was addressed at the next council meeting, but it's just because of the unusual timing. So it would be, it would appear on the agenda at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Listed under debate.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Any other unfinished business?
I do.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Gregory.
I just, this question would be for Corporation Counsel. Me and Alderwoman Connolly, some months ago, I wait.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's all good. It happens. A few months ago, me and Alderwoman Connolly submitted some health and wellness for, for houses with, addressing fly dumping fines and things of that nature. Are we making progress on that?
We had prepared a draft with some significant fines. I know that Alderman, Alderwoman Connolly was reviewing those and wanted a chance to make some more comments. And so I would expect we could, if there's time, maybe we can do that before the next meeting or see how much further or in what direction we want to take that.
Yes, and I'd ask for a word copy of the, the language so that I could make edits myself on it.
Yes, I mean, we can, we can do that.
Thank you.
The provisions that we were trying to address related to basically emergency situations. And so just, just take a moment here and talk about it. It significantly increased the fines dramatically in terms of what the, what the administrative court can impose under those extreme circumstances. And again, we can, we can work some more on that, and, but it's, I would say has some real teeth in it, and the only question becomes kind of how much further, what other direction we want to take it.
And I will say, Alderman Gregory, we didn't have fly dumping addressed in this ordinance, but maybe you and I could talk about this.
It's been so long.
Yeah, I've, I've.
You apologize.
And I have, I had some, I wasn't actually, I was hoping we could introduce that for the next, next week, but I have some other thoughts on, on how we want to move forward with that and kind of a bigger picture, so.
Doesn't work for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business coming before City Council? Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just like to, once again, publicly congratulate the four graduates from Wouldn't It Be Lovely, which is housed in Ward Eight at the Douglas Avenue Methodist Church. These four women have worked very hard over the last two years and are taking some big steps moving forward. Wouldn't It Be Lovely is, is a wonderful program that helps women who are kind of starting their lives, restarting their lives after some, you know, significant setbacks and I applaud them all. I'd also like to put in a pitch to everyone, Wouldn't It Be Lovely, part of what the, the program does in addition to providing services to these women is they, they do some fabulous products, so they, and they're having a furniture sale this Saturday at Douglas Avenue Methodist Church. It's outside, they are going to, or it's inside, but they're going to be limiting the number of people who get there. If you check out their Facebook page, they have beautiful work. I've got a new face mask, thanks to the women at Wouldn't It Be Lovely, and would encourage everyone to give them your support. Thank you.
Yep, congratulations, it is a great program. So thanks for bringing that up. And what's the hours of Saturdays?
I believe it starts at nine and I can't remember when it ends, I can look it up for you.
Starting at nine o'clock at United Methodist Church?
No, Douglas Avenue Methodist.
Okay, very good. Any other new business coming before the council? One thing I'd like to clarify, we did have a meeting with Downtown Springfield and about the Adams Street closing and, you know, we came to, or I came to a decision because with part of Adam Street closing, it did impact some of the businesses on the west side. And so we are working to have parklets, more consistent look with parklets, expanding the downtown dining or other areas that have dining, but especially for downtown. And so we will be helping assist, hopefully through CARESAC dollars, with the parklet cost. But what we decided to do is allow them to stay closed until the parklets are in place. Hopefully that happens before June or by June. And then after that point in time, they'd be opened back up with one lane of traffic, of course, one lane traffic as it heads, I believe, to the west as it normally does now. But there'd be parklets there and that way it wouldn't interfere with businesses, but then they would continue with their Sunday brewsy brunch each Sunday going forward. So just to add a point of clarification, but for this month, they'll remain closed for the time being until the parklets are in place. So.
Did you mention Farmer's Market stays the same?
Yep, Farmer's Market stays the same and actually that was supposed to coincide with the Farmer's Market, which starts, I think, a week from Saturday, I believe. So any other new business? Alderman McMinimum.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to comment favorably on our Springfield Police Department. I think we're noticing every two or three days an arrest for a loaded weapon or a, someone who flees a car and our police are able to find the loaded weapon on the ground or they find the loaded weapon in the vehicle and we're making arrests. And I know we're getting these communications more so now because we've asked for those updates regarding significant effective activity by our police department, but I think this is reflective of a, an effort by SPD to address the, particularly the armed violence within our city. And that's difficult work, it's high-risk work and our men in blue uniforms need to know that we appreciate the work they're doing. Thank you.
Chief, if you care to say anything about that or it's up to you?
First and foremost, just thank you, the minimum amount, they're working extremely hard. Obviously, everybody knows the situation that we're working with and manpower as well as society as a whole and the public's been coming forward, providing information on some of those arrests. I know that information is leading to those arrests, you know, and I think the help of Crime Stoppers up in the money for helping us get guns off the streets has been successful as well. So again, it's just a matter of the community working with us, providing that information and us following up on it to get to it, but they are doing a great job right now.
It does, you're working in conjunction with the state's attorney's office, of course, and then can you comment on how many guns have been retrieved or individuals have been arrested? Do you know that?
I don't have the exact information since our last update, but it's over 40 guns this year. Kenny, is that correct?
More than that.
More than 40 guns so far, gun arrests so far this year. Again, you know, a lot of that's coming from the community providing information.
Right.
That is the key, that is the key. When they call through up and say that Kenny Winslow's out here walking around carrying a gun, I know he's a convicted felon, that's something we can follow up on versus some white guy walking down the street wearing a blue uniform, carrying a gun, you know. So the more descriptive it has been, the better it has led to information that our officers can follow up on and we're, we're seeing some success with it. And as the mayor said, the state's attorney's office has been very helpful with us. You know, we've had conversations and, uh, working together to make sure we're getting the, a fair bond amount on people to keep dangerous people off our streets and also prosecuting those cases. We had that conversation between the state's attorney and the US attorney to see where we can get the stiffer sentence at. I've said all along, somebody illegally carrying a gun is one social media post, one text message, one argument away from pulling the trigger, trying to take somebody's life, you know. And I've said all along that I don't believe that if you shoot at somebody, it should be probationable. That was a change in the law back in 17. So again, you know, we're going to still continue to argue to hopefully get that changed at the State House that if you're willing enough to pull the trigger, it should be non-probationable, in my opinion.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Alderwoman DeSenzio.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things to bring up on a much lighter note. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. As the daughter of a teacher, that means a lot to me, especially this last year with my son being fully remote. You have no idea the appreciation I have for teachers. Alderman McMenamin is married to a former teacher, Alderwoman Conley is married to a teacher. If I'm leaving anyone out, you know, teachers, great people, way better than me, I can tell you that. Today is also International Firefighters Day, so thank you, I'm glad we were able to get your overtime pass tonight. Thank you for, I think there were three structure fires yesterday alone in Springfield, so, you know, along with the crazy weather we had, so, so thank you for that. And then on Thursday, it starts Nurse Appreciation Week. And if anyone has really gone through this last year, it's our frontline workers and our nurses, so just want to give them the acknowledgement. And then the ultimate acknowledgement, which none of you men.
Mother's Day.
About to get to it.
Wow.
Good job, Alderman McMinimum.
I was going to say, so Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there and to the single dads that serve as mothers, thank you as well, because there's a lot of you out there too. So Happy Mother's Day, everybody. Yes.
Happy Mother's Day, every, all the ladies.
Thank you.
Just echo what Alderwoman DeSenzio had said, you know, my mom was a teacher and all my sisters at some point in their life were teachers, but really the first teachers in all our lives are our mothers, so that goes without saying, but we don't say it enough. But I think Chief really hit the nail on the head with regards to the importance of community engagement. And that's what we're going to continue to work towards with all our departments, but especially with the police and fire department, so we can be better engaged and have that level of trust, so we have that two-way communication going back and forth to better serve the public. So thank you for all those remarks, Alderwoman DeSenzio. Any other new business?
Yeah, Mayor.
Alderman Proctor.
This proves that people watch City Council. Farmer's Market is Wednesday, May 12th.
Wednesday, May 12th is when it starts. Very good. It's a week from tomorrow. Any other new business? I do have Antonia Genicio signed up to speak. Is there anybody else that wish to address the City Council?
I'm on you.
And then after that, if nobody else is going to speak, we do have a request to executive session and Corporation Counsel will.
Hello?
Lead us into that, yes.
Happy Mother's Day, Happy Single Father's Day and all of that, including you, Mr. Redford. But I do have something to say. I understand we're working awful hard on Popular Place. Whatever they're doing over there, they're making Livingston a racetrack. They got other places to go out of. They can go out on 25th Street, they can go out on 25th Street, can go down one block and go out to the light if they're afraid to go anyplace else. It is getting hard to have cars. And not only that, I hate to bring it up, but there was two parked cars down by Livingston and Cook. Where there is big signs, no parking, okay? No parking at all. They don't read, so I guess we'll have to put it in digital lights so they can see it, okay? I don't know. But I think it's time that we realize that there is a problem there, especially on Livingston and Cook when you get all that traffic going through and for Channel 20 or for the, the, what, million, once in a million, get started where they've really got a lot of traffic, they're going to have to kind of do something different for their parking, which I understand. It's pretty hard to have a lot of cars on that, in them little places. I also want to thank the fact that fly dumping is on my big list, okay? But if it wasn't for my neighborhood police officer coming out and going through the furniture that was on my lot and people watching, I want to say I have not had any more fly dumping. None. And it's not because of my pink hair either, okay? But I, that's what I want to say. If everybody would listen to what's going on in their neighborhood and let the officers that are the neighborhood police officers or even call in about anything, whether it's small or whether they don't think it's important, but it is important to somebody else, I think it's time that they do that. And I thank the people that have been calling in to get the guns off of the street. I think it's about time and I think that whoever passed the concealed weapon law should be concealed theirselves, you know, because I think it's very bad for some of these people that have tempers and don't know how to control them. And I want to thank them. And I want to also thank the fire department because they did come out and check my house when I had some gas and some other things going on and they are there. They are very nice, very polite, and not only that, they work very hard. They're out there in the public every day. And one thing we didn't mention is the wives, the mothers that work in the police department and the mothers on the fire department, they can get hurt just as bad, just as anybody out here in the streets. And I want to thank the people that are doing that and calling in and just dropping a little dime of what they want to say. And I do thank the teachers because the first teacher I had was my mother and my mother was a hard-nosed, okay? And my father was too. But I also had another teacher at the YWCA and that was your mother. And she taught me a heck of a lot too. And it's how you present yourself, how you walk, is how people represent, how they report to you, whether they want to be your friend or whether they think you're capable of doing whatever you want to do. I want to thank everybody that's on the front line, whether you like them or not, at least respect them. I don't care if they're purple, pink, blue and got polka dots on their hair, don't say anything, okay? Because I almost had a polka dot on my head, okay? But that's what I want to thank because we're all here in this together, we're not separate, we're not individuals, we're all together. And it's time that everybody realized that. You know, God made us all, no matter where you come from, he made us all, made us stand on two feet, made us have our own free mind to do what we want to do. You take the consequences. If you're going to shoot somebody, you got to take the time on, that's the only way to go.
Thank you very much.
I got to go, thank you guys.
Excuse me.
God bless all.
Alderman Williams.
Yes, you're, you're going to ask the mayor about the R3 application.
Oh, yeah, the R3 application.
So you can stop asking me.
Well, I'm sorry, I got a phone call and I don't know what it is, I hope it's not what I think it is, but that's beside the point. I would like to know.
As far as the R3 applications?
Yes.
I'll have to get with Alderman Williams and Gregory to finalize it.
Okay, I want to say something.
Sure.
I turned in an application the last time, okay, the last time we had it. And I was turned down because I sued the city. Corporate counsel, have I ever sued the city?
How far back are you going?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I have never sued the city. I always took care of my business in front of the City Council and before we had the City Council, I went to the mayor.
Right.
And I couldn't care less, okay? I have never sued the city. This is my city, everybody's city. They do something wrong, you go to the person that did it and you take care of it, simple fact. That's how I was brought up. And I did use fisticuffs when I was going to school, okay?
Well, thank you. Maybe you can get with Alderman Gregory.
Forty years that my name, my birthday falls on Mother's Day.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
On Poplar, we did meet with the developer and they are working on a design and will be coming with public input, hopefully within next few weeks, is that correct, Alderman?
Yes, sir. Good.
So Corporation Counsel, if you want to, there a need for executive session?
Understanding that there's been a request for executive session to discuss potential pending eminent litigation.
Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. We're adjourned for executive session.
I started to get worried, you want her R3 application.
Come on, guys.
When she got that question, she was, she was, she was, she was, she was, she was , she was, 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 she was,